Hello and welcome. On my last study sessions video, I have covered Wireshark packet operations room. And in this video, I'll be covering the Wireshark traffic analysis room of TryHackMe. I presume that it will be a long video as it will cover a lot of stuff. So let's get right into it. In this, we'll cover techniques and key points of traffic analysis with Wireshark and detect suspicious activities. Know that this is the third and the last room of Wireshark Room Trio. And it's suggested to visit the first two rooms. Okay, done. We've covered and completed the first two rooms. Okay. So we'll start with Nmap scans. Nmap is an industry standard tool for mapping networks, identifying live hosts and discovering the services. As it is one of the most used network scanner tools, a security analyst should identify the network patterns created with it. That makes sense. This section will cover identifying the most common Nmap scan types. That are TCP connect scans, ESIN scans and UDP scans. It is essential to know how Nmap scans work to spot scan activity on the network. However, it is impossible to understand the scan details without using correct filters. Below are the base filters to probe Nmap scan behavior on the network. TCP flags in a nutshell. So in order to do a global search, we would use the filters TCP and UDP on Wireshark. If we're looking for only SIN flags, we would be using the filter TCP flags equals 2. SIN flag is set, the rest of the bits are not important. We would be using tcpflags.sin as it is set and equals 1. Okay. Only acknowledge flag, tcpflag 16. So 2 is SIN, 16 is ACK. ACK flag is set, the rest of the bits are not important. tcpflag ACK equals 1, just like this one. Only SIN ACK flags, we would use 18. SIN and ACK are set, the rest of the bits are not important. tcpflag sin 1 and tcpflag ACK 1. Okay, so we're using the logical expression AND in order to create a filter for SIN and ACK packets that are set. Only reset flag, it's 4. Reset flag is set. Okay, only reset and acknowledge flags is 20. Reset and ACK are set, the rest of the bits are not important. Okay, only finish flag. tcpflag 1. And, uh... Okay. TCP connect scan. So it's almost impossible to memorize these all. But once we get the questions, I will probably use this information here as a reference. TCP connect scans relies on three-way handshake, needs to finish the handshake process unlike UDP scans. Usually conduct with mmap sd command, used by non-privileged users, only option for non-reuser. Windows size larger than 1024 bytes as the request expects some data due to the nature of the protocol. Open tcpport. So if the tcpport is open, uh, this is the connection, the packet that we would see. So the first packet is synchronize, the response is synchronize and acknowledge. And the final response is acknowledge. Another example is SIN, SINACK, ACK, reset, acknowledge. And if the port is closed, the response to the synchronize packet would be reset and acknowledge. The images below show that through a handshake process, the open-close tcpports, images and PCAP samples are split to make investigation easier and understanding each case's details. So the tcpport is open. The first packet is SIN, the response is SINACK and response to that is acknowledge. So the three-way handshake comes from these three responses. This one is for, I believe, terminating the connection. But yeah, close tcpport. If the port is closed, the response to the SIN flag would be reset and acknowledge. The above images provide patterns in isolated traffic. However, it is not always easy to spot the given patterns in big capture files. Therefore, analysts need to use a generic filter to view the initial anomaly patterns and then it'll be easier to focus on a specific traffic point. The given filter shows the TCP connect scan patterns in a capture file. So tcpflag SIN 1 and tcpflag acknowledge 0 and tcpwindow size is larger than 1024. If we use this filter, this would be an example of response. Okay. SIN scans. TCP scan in a nutshell doesn't rely on a three-way handshake. No need to finish the handshake process. Usually conduct with mmapss command, used by privileged users, usually have a size less than or equal to 1024 bytes as the request is not finished and it doesn't expect to receive data. So an open, if the port is open, this would be the communication. First message would be a SIN synchronized flag and then the response would be synchronize and acknowledge. And instead of completing the three-way handshake by sending and responding to this with an acknowledge flag, the source would be sending a reset flag and terminate the connection without completing the three-way handshake. So this is normally used for more stealth scans. As there is no handshakes completed and, um... Yeah, this, these, this is, um... From what I know is used for scans that are meant to be more stealthy. If the port is closed, the response synchronized flag would be reset and acknowledge. So here is an example. The first request from the source is SIN and the destination response is with SINACK. And then the source terminates the connection with a reset flag without completing the three-way handshake. And if the port is closed, the destination address responds with a reset and acknowledge flag. The given filter shows TCP send scan patterns in a capture file. Okay. UDP scan is a nutshell, doesn't require handshake process, no problem for open ports. ICMP error message for closed ports, usually conducted with nmap su command. Okay, so if the port is open, you send a UDP packet and, um... If you do not receive any error messages, like this one here, ICMP type code 3 message, destination unreachable, port unreachable. If you do not receive this message, that would mean the port is open. However, if you receive an error message, an ICMP error message, it would mean the port is closed. So here we can see, um... Closed port number 69 and open port number 68. So for the port 68, we don't receive any ICMP error message and that would mean that the port is open. However, for the port 69, we receive an ICMP error message, which would mean the port is closed. The above image shows that the closed port returns an ICMP packet. No further information is provided about the error at first glance. So how can an analyst decide where this error message belongs? The ICMP error message uses the original request as encapsulated data to show the source and reason of the packet. Once you expand the ICMP section in the packet details pane, you will see the encapsulated data and the original request is shown in the below image. So... We'll click on the request on the... And from this section, we check the ICMP packet, I guess. And, uh... This is the ICMP packet and this is the encapsulated data. The given filter shows the UDP scan patterns in a capture file, ICMP type 3 and ICMP code 3. It would show all the, um... Closed port responses. Detecting suspicious activities in chunk files is easy and a great way to learn how to focus on details. Now use that example file to put your skills into practice against a single capture file and answer the questions below. Okay. So let's open up Wireshark. And, uh... Let's open the... Desktop, exercise PCAPs, Nmap, exercise PCAPNG, open. So this is an example packet capture. We're looking at the first question that says, what is the total number of the TCP connect scans? Let's get back to TCP connect scans. So I'll use this filter right here. The given filter shows the TCP connect scans patterns in a capture file. So let's give it a try. So it says the displayed, um... I believe they're... It's either 2003? Or... Is it 1000? Yeah, it is. So it shows right here. Which scan type is used to scan TCP port 80? So there are three types of scans that are TCP connect, SIN and UDP. If we are looking for, um... TCP port 80, I believe that it would be TCP... Connect. How many UDP close port messages are there? UDP close ports. Let's go up and, um... The given filter shows the user in capture file. So I'll use this one. So it showed up, um, 1080, 83, uh, scan patterns. So I believe that would be the answer. Which UDP port in the 55 and 70 port range is open? Okay, I don't think that we have seen how to make such filter. So I'm going to check the hint. Have the traffic analysis done by hand when using Wireshark? Filter the traffic as shown in the task, then filter the destination port UDP with the filter column option. Finally scroll the bar in the packet list section, investigate the findings manually. So in order to look for UDP ports within the range of 55 to 70, um, this would be the filter that we should use. Um... So this request for port 67 is unreachable, which means it's closed. This request for port 69 is also closed. But I believe the request for 68, port 68 is open as there is no destination unreachable message for the mentioned port number. So I would go for 68. And that's it for the, um, tasks 2. Next up on task 3, we'll be covering ARP poisoning and spoofing, as known as the man in the middle attack. ARP protocol or address resolution protocol is the technology responsible for allowing devices to identify themselves on a network. ARP poisoning, also known as spoofing or man in the middle attack, is a type of attack that involves network jamming, menu plating by sending malicious ARP packets to the default gateway. The ultimate aim is to manipulate the IP to MAC address table and sniff the traffic of the target host. There are a variety of tools available to conduct ARP attacks. However, the mindset of that attack is static, so it is easy to detect such an attack by knowing the ARP protocol workflow and the Wireshark skills. ARP analysis in a nutshell works on the local network, enables the communication with MAC addresses, not a secure protocol, not a rootable protocol. It doesn't have an authentication function, common patterns are requests and responds, announcement and gracious packets. Before investigating the traffic, let's review some legitimate and suspicious ARP packets. The legitimate requests are similar to, um, to the shown picture. A broadcast request that asks if any of the available hosts use an IP address and reply from the host that uses the particular IP address. And for, um, to look for ARP requests, we would use the filter ARP. ARP options for grabbing the low hanging fruits. OP code 1 is ARP requests. OP code 2 is ARP responses. Hunt ARP scanning. Hunt possible ARP poison detection, hunt possible ARP flooding from detection. So an ARP packet would look like this. From a source MAC address, there would be a packet, a message asking who has 192.168.1.1, tell 192.168.1.25. So this request is being made by this IP address with this source MAC address. And it's looking for the mentioned IP address here, that is 1.1. And an example response would come from the mentioned IP address saying this IP address is at this MAC address. So the request would look like this. OP code request 1, sender MAC address and IP address, the target MAC address unknown and the target IP address is 1.1. The reply would be OP code reply 2. Sender MAC address is this, the sender IP address is this. And these are the target MAC and IP addresses. A suspicious situation means having two different ARP responses conflict for a particular IP address. In that case, Wireshark's expert InfoTap warns the analyst. However, it only shows the second occurrence of the duplicate value to highlight the conflict. Therefore, identifying the malicious packet from the legitimate one is the analyst's challenge. A possible IP spoofing case is shown in the picture below. So, um, normally, this source address would make the ARP request saying, who has this IP address, tell me. But here we can see two different MAC addresses for the same IP address. So this is, um, an indicator of a man in the middle attack. As the, um... Hacker in the middle would spoof the IP address, spoof the MAC address and, um... Receive the packets that are destined to the victim. And by doing that, they would be able to, um, capture their requests. And if their requests are made as, in an insecure way, they could read the insides of the packets and, um... Gain unauthorized access to, uh, a victim's personal information or steal their credentials. Hearing over the network architecture and inspecting traffic for a specific timeframe can help detect the anomaly. As an analyst, you should take notes of your findings before going further. This will help you to organize and make it easier to correlate the further findings. Look at the given picture, there is a column, look the MAC address that ends with B4 crafted and ARP request with the, um, 192.168.1.25 IP address and it claimed to have the 1.1 IP address. Possible IP address match, detection notes, one IP address announced from a MAC address, findings, MAC is this, IP is this. Possible ARP spoofing or spoofing attempt, two MAC addresses, column the same IP address as we saw here. The 1.1 IP address is a possible gateway address. And these are the MAC addresses. Possible ARP flooding attempt, the MAC address that ends with B4 claims to have a different or new IP address. Let's keep inspecting the traffic to spot any other anomalies. Know that the case is split into multiple capture files and make the investigation easier. At this point, it is evident that there is an anomaly. A security analyst cannot figure a flood of ARP requests. This could be malicious activities, can or network problems. There is a new anomaly, the MAC address that ends with B4, right here. Crafted multiple ARP requests with the 1.25 IP address. Let's focus on the source of this anomaly and extend the taken notes. Possible IP address match, one IP address announced from MAC address and that's the one that ends with B4, this one right here. And the IP is this. Possible ARP spoofing attempt, two MAC addresses, column the same IP address. The... MAC addresses that claim the same IP address are the ones that ends with F4 and B4. Possible ARP spoofing attempt, MAC address that ends with B4 claims to have a different or new IP address. Possible ARP flooding attempt, MAC address that ends with B4, craft multiple ARP requests against a range of IP addresses. Up to this point, it is evident that a MAC address that ends with B4 owns the 1.25 IP address and craft suspicious ARP requests against a range of IP addresses. It also claimed to have the possible gateway address as well. Let's focus on other protocols and spot the reflection of this anomaly in the following sections of the timeframe. So, um... There is HTTP traffic and everything looks normal at the IP level. There is a GET, um, request being made on the login.php, um, page. Let's have the MAC addresses columns in the packet list pane and to reveal the communication beyond the IP addresses. One more anomaly. The MAC address that ends with B4, uh, right here, is the destination of all HTTP packets. So this could potentially mean that a hacker is, um... Directing all the packets that was meant to be sent to, um, the victim. It is evident that there is a MITM attack and the attacker is the host with the MAC address that ends with B4. All traffic linked to 1.12 IP address is forwarded to the malicious host. Let's summarize the findings before concluding the investigation. There's three IP to MAC address matches. Attacker, the attacker created noise with ARP packets. So this is the MAC address and the IP address of the attacker. Router gateway, gateway address is 1.1 with the MAC address of this. Victim, the attacker sniffed all traffic of the victim. And the victim's IP address is 1.12. Taking those bits and piece of information in a big capture file is challenging. However, in real life cases, you will not have tailored data ready for investigation. However, in real life cases, you will not have tailored data ready for investigation. Therefore, you need to have an uh have the analyst mindset, knowledge and tool uh skills to filter and detect the anomalies. In traffic analysis, there are always alternative solutions available. The solution type and the approach depend on the analyst's knowledge and skill level and the available data sources. Detecting suspicious activities in chunk files is easy and a great way to learn how to focus on how to focus on the details. Now use exercise files to put your skills into practice against a single capture file and answer the questions below. Okay, for this one. We're gonna use the. ARP and XIP cap NG. So the first question is, what is the number of ARP requests crafted by the attacker? Only requests made by the attacker are relevant to this question. Okay, so. We know the MAC address of the attacker. This could be a views. And we're looking for ARP requests. So let's have a look. So we'll use the OP code one for as it's a um. We're looking for ARP requests made by the attacker. But I'm also looking for a way of filtering the source. Um ARP address. Let's see if we can find a. Okay, this is it, I think. Why is it so slow? Okay. So this should reveal the answer. Oops. Okay, what have I done wrong? About this one. So we're looking for ARP requests um made by the attacker. So the source uh MAC is this and we're looking for requests, so the ARP OP code is one. This should be the answer then. Okay, what is the number of HTTP packets received by the attacker? So. If this relates to source, we would look for destination. And um. Look for HTTP packets, if I just type in HTTP. This should be the answer. What is number of sniffed username and password entries? Okay, uh filter the site visited by the victim, then filter the post requests. Focusing on the URI sections of the packet details after filtering could help. Okay, filter the site visited by the victim. The site is. So the site is test PHP dot vulmap dot com. To the HTTP host. Okay, what am I doing wrong? HTTP host. Then filter the post requests. No. Okay, would I go back? HTTP request is post. Okay, so these are the um. Post requests made on the website that is taste that is test PHP dot vulmap dot com. Uh and we're looking for a number of the sniffed username and password entries. Is it ten? No, it's not. I think this is the answer for the to this question as the name of the client is client three five four. And the comment is nice work. Password of client nine sixty-eight. Client not here. So I believe that the the user info. Number would. Maybe reveal the answer. So it might be eight. Okay, so this one is a test um request. And uh these two are. Seem to be duplicate requests. So I would go for six. As this one's a test, this one's duplicate and these. Six are. Seem to be. Yeah. We are now on task four um and it's it's about identifying hosts. Uh like DHCP net bios or curb Ross. So when investigating a compromise or malware infection activity, a security analyst should know how to identify the hosts on the network. Apart from the IP to MAC address match. One of the best methods is identifying the hosts and users on the network to decide the investigation's starting point. And list the hosts and user associated with the malicious traffic or activity. Usually um enterprise networks use a predefined pattern to name users and hosts. While this makes knowing and following the inventory easier. It has good and bad sides. The good side is that it'll it'll be easy to identify a user or host by looking at the name. The bad side is that it'll be easier to clone that pattern and live um in the enterprise network for adversaries. Uh there are multiple solutions to avoid these kind of activities, but for a security analyst, it is essential uh to have host and user identification skills. Protocols that can be used in host and a user identification eh that are are um DCP traffic. Uh net bios traffic and curb Ross traffic. DCP analysis, um the HTTP protocol or uh DCP is the technology responsible for managing automatic IP address. And required communication parameters assignment. Um DCP investigation in a nutshell for global search, we're looking for DCP or boot P. Um filtering the proper DCP packet options is vital to finding an event of interest. These request packets contain the host name information. VCP AC packets represent accepted requests, DHCP NAK packets represent denied requests. Uh due to nature, due to the nature of the protocol, only option fifty-three. Uh has predefined strict values, you should filter the packet at first and then you can filter the rest of the options by applying this column. Or use the advanced filters that contains in matches. Uh these request options for grabbing the low hanging fruits, option twelve, host name. Option fifty is request IP address. Requested IP address, option fifty-one is requested IP lease time, option sixty-one is client's MAC address. DCP options for grabbing the low hanging fruits, option fifteen is domain name. Uh option fifty-one is assigned IP lease time. DCP NAK options for grabbing long throats, option fifty-six, message rejected details and reason. As the message could be unique according to the case and situation, it is suggested to read the message instead of filtering it. Thus, the analyst could create more reliable hypothesis result by understanding the event circumstances. As we can see here in the picture, option twelve is host name. And uh we can see the other options as well. Net BIOS uh analysis, net bios or network basic input output system is a technology responsible for allowing applications on different hosts. To communicate with each other, global search, we're using NVNS. NVNS options for grabbing the low hanging fruits, uh queries. And BNS name contains keyword. Curb Ross analysis is the default authentication service in those domains. It is responsible for authenticating service requests when two or more computers over the untrust network. The ultimate aim is to prove identity securely. For global search, we use curb Ross. Um user account search, C name string, the username. Some packets cover host name information in this field, to avoid this confusion, filter the variable value and the values with the host names. And the other, the ones without without it are usernames, okay. Restrictions protocol, PVNO is protocol version. Realm domain name for the generated ticket. S name, service and domain name for the generated ticket, addresses, client IP address and then bios name. The addresses information is only available in request packets. The technical suspicion suspicious activities in chunk file is easy and a great way to learn how to focus on details. Now use exercise files and put your skills into practice against a single capture file and answer the questions below. Okay, so here comes the uh practical part. This time we're using. DHCP unit bios and curb Ross. DCP advise PCAP. What is MAC address of the host galaxy A thirty? Okay, filtering a pattern rather than the actual value can help. Looking for the MAC address of the host galaxy A thirty. So I will grab this one. And we'll look for. Galaxy A thirty. Okay, so this is galaxy A twelve. And this is galaxy A thirty. And this is galaxy A30. And the MAC address would be 98141 TB. 9660. How many NetBIOS registration requests does the level GM workstation have? Okay. Missed flag op code five. See what that does first. Okay, it's not mentioned in the The answer for this should be 16. So with the filter that the hint gave us and using an end logical expression and using the name contains filter. We have managed to find all the registration requests that this workstation have. Which host requested the IP address? Okay. This one we'll have to look at the requests. And let's do it manually and check the requested IP address. Here we can see the requested IP address and hostname is galaxy A12. Now we're going to use the other PCAP file. What is the IP address of the user U5? Enter the address in DFANG format. Okay. Look for the user U5. Let's try this one first. IP address of I'm trying to find where it states that the username is U5. As there are a couple IP addresses here. But I'll try to go for the first IP address that comes up. So let's use this IP address. To DFANG. It's 101. Okay, it's this one. What is the hostname of the available host in the Kerberos packets? Host name of the available host. So I think this time we're going to use this one right here, this filter. As it says, the values end with variable, the dollar sign are host names. It only shows up one result. We're looking at hostname available. Host name of the available host. It's this one. Oh, it's this. No. Okay, it's under the CNAME string. And that was task four. Next up, we have task five, which covers tunneling traffic DNS and ICMP. Traffic tunneling is also known as port forwarding, transferring the data or resources in a secure method to network segments and zones. It can be used for internet to private networks and private networks internet flow and direction. There is an encapsulation process to hide the data, so the transferred data appear natural for the case. But it contains private data packets and transfers them to the final destination securely. Tunneling provides anonymity and traffic security, and therefore it is highly used by enterprise networks. However, as it gives a significant level of data encryption, attackers use tunneling to bypass security parameters using the standard and trusted protocols used in everyday traffic like ICMP and DNS. Therefore, a security analyst is for a security analyst, it is crucial to have the ability to spot ICMP and DNS anomalies. ICMP is designed for diagnosing and reporting network communication issues. It is highly used in our reporting and testing as it is a trusted network layer protocol. Sometimes it is used for denial of service attacks. Also adversaries use it in data exploitation and command and control tunneling activities. ICMP analysis in a nutshell, usually ICMP tunneling attacks or anomalies appearing or starting after a malware execution or vulnerability exploitation. As the ICMP package can transfer an additional data payload, adversaries use this section to exploit data and establish a command and control connection. It could be a TCP, HTTP, or SSH data. As the ICMP protocols provide a great opportunity to carry extra data, it also has disadvantages. Most enterprise networks block custom packets or require administrative privileges to create custom ICMP packets. A large volume of ICMP traffic or anomalous packet sizes are indicators of ICMP tunneling. Still, the adversaries could create custom packets that match the regular ICMP packet size. So it is still cumbersome to detect these tunneling activities. However, a security analyst should know the normal and the abnormal to spot the possible anomaly and escalate it for escalated for further analysis. The global search filter for ICMP packets is straight up ICMP. ICMP options for grabbing the low hanging fruits, packet length, ICMP destination addresses, encapsulated protocol signs, and ICMP payload. The data length is larger than 64 bytes. And it's an ICMP package. DNS analysis, domain name system is designed to translate or convert IP domain addresses to IP addresses. It is also known as a phone book of the internet as it is the essential part of web services. It is commonly used and trusted and therefore often ignored. Due to that adversary uses use it adversaries use it in data exploitation and C2 activities. DNS analysis in a nutshell, similar to ICMP tunnels, DNS attacks or anomalies appearing or starting after a malware execution or vulnerability exploitation. Adversary creates or already has a domain address and configures it as a C2 channel. The malware or the commands executed after exploitation sends DNS queries to the C2 server. However, these queries are longer than default DNS queries and craft for subdomain addresses. Unfortunately, these subdomain addresses are not actual addresses. They are encoded commands as shown below. Encoded commands dot malicious domain dot com. When the query is routed to the C2 server, the server sends the actual malicious commands to the host. As the DNS queries are a natural part of the networking activity, these packets have the chance of not being detected by network parameters. A security analyst should know how to investigate the DNS packet lengths and target addresses to spot these anomalies. So global search filter for DNS packets would be DNS. DNS options for grabbing the low hanging fruits, query length, anomalous, and non regular names and DNS addresses. Long DNS addresses will encode as subdomain addresses, known patterns like DNSCAT or DNS TCP. Statistical analysis like the anomalous volume of DNS requests for particular target. DNS contains DNSCAT, DNS query name length is larger than 15 and is not MDNS. Disable local link device queries, yeah. And this is an example filtering. Detecting suspicious activities in chunk files is easy and a great way to learn how to focus on the details. Okay. So the first question is user discovery. Let's do it. Investigate anomalous packets. Which protocol is used in ICMP tunneling? Remember, Wireshark is not an IDS or IPS tool. A security analyst should know how to filter the packets and investigate the results manually. Two, filtering anomalous packets, investigating packet details could help. So let's try and use this filter. Which protocol is used in ICMP tunneling? This is the data that was sent. We're looking for the protocol used. We're looking for the protocol used. So I have um... filtered out the anomalous packets and investigating the packet details, looking for a protocol. Currently couldn't find anything, but... Okay, this one gives out... Open SSH. So I will try my chance with SSH. The second question is use the desktop as DNSPEC file. This time, we're using DNSPEC. Investigate anomalous packets. What is the suspicious main domain address that receives anomalous DNS queries? So um, let's filter out... Those packets. After filtering packets, focus on the payload data in the packet bytes section. You might need to use the tool in full screen mode. Full screen the VM. Okay. Investigate anomalous packets. What is the suspicious main domain address that receives anomalous DNS queries? Enter the address in defang format. So let's start off with this filter. So let's check the um, packets. Okay, we found dataxfil.com. So this... Might be it. I'll try my chance with it. So let's go to um... Cyberchef. Looking at dataxfil.com. Try to grab it. And that's it. We continue with the task six, which covers clear text protocol analysis FTP. Uh, investigating clear text protocol traces sounds easy, but when the time comes to investigate a big network trace for incident analysis and response, the game changes. Uh, proper analysis is more than following the stream and reading the clear text data. For a security analyst, it is important to create statistics and key results from the investigation process. As mentioned earlier at the beginning of the Warrshack Room series, the analysts uh, should have their core network knowledge and tools, tool skills to accomplish this. Let's simulate a clear text protocol investigation with Wireshark. FTP is designed to transfer files with ease, so it focuses on simplicity rather than security. As a result of this, using this protocol in unsecured environments could create security issues like MITM attacks, credential stealing, and unauthorized access, phishing, malware planting, and data exploitation. Um, for a global search, uh, we would use the FTP filter. FTP options. X1X series for information request responses. X2X series for connection messages. X3X series for authentication messages. Um... For example, 211 would um... Bring up the system status results. 212 would bring up directory status. And 213 would bring up file status. Um... 220 would be server ready. 227 entering passive mode. 228 long passive mode. 229 extended passive mode. Um... 230 for user login. 231 for user log out. 331 for valid username. 430 for invalid username or password. 530 for no login and valid password. Okay, FTP commands for grabbing the low-hanging fruits. User for username. Pass for password. Current working directory. CWD list. Advice users example for brute force signal. List failed login attempts. Brute force signal. List target username. So this result would um, this filter would bring out, uh, bring up the invalid password attempts for a certain username. So that we like, we can um... List the target username. Password spray signal. List targets for a static password. Okay. Like here is an example um, FTP filtering result. So let's get the questions. Use a desktop. FTP, FTP, PCAP file. Let's do it. Open to desktop. Exercise PCAPs. FTP, FTP PCAP. Um, how many incorrect login attempts are there? FTP code 530. So here we do have um... FTP response code. We're looking for 530. So I would say 737. What is the size of the file accessed by the FTP account? Okay. Filtering response code 213. It would come up with the file status. So this should be the... Size if I'm not mistaken. Let's try it out. Yes, it is. The adversary uploaded a document to the FTP server. What is the file name? A document to the FTP server. So we have two files here. Um... Looking for the type of, or the file name. If you follow this packet... User is FTP. Pass is FTP. This is the current directory. Entering extensive, extended passive mode. Resume, resume dot doc, is that it? Yes, it is. Uh, the adversary tried to assign special flags to change the executing permissions of the uploaded file. What is the command used by the adversary? I think it's this. Um, continuing with the task seven, which covers clear text protocol analysis HTTP. Um, hypertext transfer protocol is a clear text-based request response and client server protocol. It is the standard type of a network activity that requests or serves web pages, and by default, it is not blocked by any network perimeter. As a result of being unencrypted and the backbone of web traffic, HTTP is one of the most, one of the must-know protocols in traffic analysis. Following attacks could be detected with the help of HTTP analysis. Um... Phishing pages, web attacks, data exploitation, and command and control traffic. HTTP analysis, analysis in a nutshell. For global search, what could use the filters? HTTP and HTTP2. HTTP2 is a revision of the HTTP protocol for better performance and security. It supports binary data transfer and request and response multiplexing. HTTP request methods uh, for grabbing the low-hanging fruits. Get, post, and request, listing all requests. These would be the filters. HTTP request method get or post. Response status codes. 200 would be okay. 301 would be moot permanently. 302 would be moot temporally. Uh, 400 for bad request. 401 for unauthorized. 403 for forbidden. 404 for not found. 405 for method not allowed. 408 for request timeout. 500 for internal server error. And 503 would be for uh, service unavailable. HTTP parameters for grabbing the low-hanging fruits. For user agent, we would use http://user_underscore-agent contains nmap. HTTP request URI contains admin. HTTP request full URI contains admin. URI stands for Uniform Resource Identifier. Okay? HTTP parameters for grabbing the low-hanging fruits. Um, server, server service name. It would be HTTP server contains Apache or NGINX. Host name of the server contains keyword. HTTP hoses, uh, blah, blah, blah. HTTP connection for connection status. Data text lines contains keyword. Okay. User agent analysis. As the adversaries use sophisticated techniques to accomplish attacks, they try to leave traces similar to natural traffic through the known and trusted protocols. For a security analyst, it is important to spot the anomaly signs on the bits and pieces of the packets. The user agent field is one of the great resources for spotting anomalies in HTTP traffic. In some cases, adversaries successfully modify the user agent data, which could look supernatural. A security analyst cannot rely only on the user agent field to spot an anomaly. Never whitelist a user agent even if it looks natural. User agent based anomaly threat detection or hunting is an additional data source to check and is useful when there is an obvious anomaly. If you're unsure about a value, you can conduct a web search to validate your findings with the default normal user agent info. And they have shared an example um, website. The global search would be HTTP user agent. Log4j analysis. A proper investigation started with the prior research on threats and anomalies going to be hunted. List review of the knowns on the Log4j attack before launching Wireshark. Research outcomes. The attack started with a post request. There are known clear text patterns like GNDI, LDAP, and exploit dot class. And these would be the filters for um, looking out for Log4j attack. Okay. Um, so the first question before we do that, we gotta open up the um... HTTP user agent PCAP file. So investigate the user agents. What is the number of anomalous user agent types? The answer is not the number of packets. It is the number of anomalous user agent types. You need to filter the user agent info as a column and conduct a manual investigation of the packet details to spot the anomalies. In addition to the obvious non-standard and modify user agent types, does Windows NT6.4 exist? Okay, that's uh... That's our hint right there. So let's um, use... The user agent filter first. We're going to filter the user agent info as a column. So let's go and find um... User agent. Last column. So we're looking at the types of anomalous user agent. So one would be SQL map, two WIFAS. This one is Mozilla, so uh... I would count that as well. That would make three. Um... This would make four. This would make four. I'm wondering if all of these are anomalous, but. I don't think so. So the the hint was mentioning Windows NT six point four. Um. This would be five. I also see N map scripting engine. So that would make six. What is packet number with a subtle spelling difference? I think it's the one where it says Mozilla. Instead of Mozilla. Um. Packet number is fifty two. Use the desktop exactly pick up HTTP, pick up NG, let's change our PC app pile. Locate the lock for J attack starting phase. What is the packet number? So we have the filters right here. Let's try this one. It um it came up with one result. And uh. Packet numbers four hundred forty four. Decode the base sixty four command. What is IP address con conducted by the adversary? Um, okay. So the base sixty four command is right here. We will have to decode it. And for that we would need to use um. Cyber chef. Okay, it's. Right here, what are we looking for? Alright, we're looking at the IP address, so let's copy this. And we're gonna have to. Defect the um. IP address. And this should be our answer. We're continuing with the task eight, which covers encrypted protocol analysis, the decrypt decrypting HTTPS. Uh when investigating web traffic analysts often run across encrypted traffic. This is caused by using the hypertext transfer protocol secure. Protocol for enhanced security against spoofing, sniffing and intercepting attacks. HTTPS uses TLS protocol to encrypt communications. So it is impossible to decrypt traffic and view the transfer data without having the encryption or decryption key pairs. As this protocol provides a good level of security for transmitting sensitive data. Attackers in malicious websites also use HTTPS. Um therefore, a security analyst should know how to use key files to decrypt encrypted traffic and investigate the traffic activity. Uh the packets will appear in the different colors as the HTTP uh traffic is encrypted. Also, protocol and info details uh like actual URL address and data returned from the server will not be fully visible. The first image below shows the HTTP packets encrypted with the TLS protocol. The second and third images demonstrate filtering HTTP packets without using a key lock file. So um. HTTP parameters for grabbing the low hanging fruits request, listing all requests. TLS for global TLS uh search. TLS client request for. I would use TLS handshake type one, uh server response would be two. And local simple service discover protocol SSDP would be SSDP. SSDP is a network protocol that provides advertisement and discovery of uh of network services. So the first image shows the HTTP pack is encrypted with the TLS protocol. These one right here. And the second and third image is emergency filtering HTTP as without using key lock file. Similar to TCP two uh through a handshake process, the TLS protocol has its uh handshake process. The first two steps contain client hello and server hello messages. The given filters show the initial hello packets in a capture file. These filters are helpful to spot spot which IP addresses are are involved in the TLS handshake. Um. These would be the filters to use. An encryption key log file is a text file that contains unique key pairs to decrypt the uh the encrypted traffic session. Uh these key pairs are automatically created per session when a connection is established with within SSL TLS enabled webpage. As these processes are all accomplished, uh in the browser, you need to configure your system and use suitable suitable browser. Like Chrome and Firefox support this to save these values as a key lock file. To do this, you will need to set up an environment variable and create the SSL key lock file. And the browser will dump the keys to this file as you browse the web. SSL TLS key pairs are created per session at the connection time, so it is important to dump the keys during the traffic capture. Otherwise, it is not possible to create or generate a suitable key lock file to decrypt the captured traffic. You can use direct click menu or edit preferences, protocols, TLS menu to add and or remove. Remove key lock files, so. Edit. Preferences. Um protocols. TLS. This is how we can add a uh decryption or encryption key. Adding key lock files with the edit preference protocol TLS menu. Viewing the traffic with or without the key lock files. So without the key lock file, we cannot see anything, but with the key lock file, we can see the um communication. The above image shows the traffic details are visible after using key lock file, although the packet details and bytes pane. Provides the data in different formats or in investigation. Decompressed header info and HTTP two packet details are available after decrypting the traffic. Depending on the packet details, you can also have the following data formats. Um frame decrypt the TLS, decompress header, reassemble TCP, reassemble SSL, detecting suspicious activity, chunk file is easy. Okay. Let's get the questions um. First question is asking us to use. The um, let's go back to HTTPS. So we're looking for the frame number of the client hello message sent to accounts google dot com. So um. So it's a client request, so we're we're gonna use the um. Feel attention type one. Look for the message that is sent to accounts google dot com. Um looking for an easy way to um. This might be it. So I would. Go with the um packet number sixteen. What was the hint? Uh decrypt the traffic with with the keys log file, text file. What is the number of HTTP two packets? Import the key file to decrypt the traffic, so let's so let's try it out. Go to protocols. We go to TLS. Our browse. And open the. Keys key lock files. So I believe it's a hundred and fifteen. As we can see right here. Go to frame three hundred and uh. Twenty two, what is the authority header of the HTTP two packet? Enter the address in defang format. Okay. So go to frame three twenty two. It's the one right here. What is the authority header of the HTTP two packet? I think it's safe browsing that google APIs dot com, but we gotta defang it. So I'm gonna have to open the cyber chef once again. Um. Let's copy the value and um. Investigate the decrypted packets and find the flag. Okay, you can explore objects after decrypting the traffic. Um. So let's try out um. Exporting. Okay, export objects. I think we should go over HTTP. Let's export this. To desktop. Let's cap this. And get the um flag. Lastly, we have um two bonus tasks, continuing with the task nine. Um hunt clear tech credentials. Up to here, we discussed how to inspect the packets for specific conditions and spot anomalies. As mentioned in the first room, wire shark is not an IDS, but it provides you suggestions for some cases under the expert info. However, sometimes anomalies replicate legitimate traffic, so the detection becomes harder. For example, in a clear text credential hunting case, it is not easy to spot the multiple credential inputs. And decide if there is a brute force attack or if it is a standard user who mis-tapped their credentials. As everything is presented at the packet level, it is hard to spot the multiple username password entries at first glance. The detection time will decrease and when an analyst can view the credentials entries as a list. Wire shark has such a future to help analysts who want to hunt um clear text credential entries. Some more such detectors like FTP, HTTP, IMAP, POP or SMTP. Uh a program takes check clear text passwords passwords from the captured file. You can view the technical credentials using the tools um credentials menu. I think it's right here. Um this feature works only after a specific uh versions of wire shark. That is version three point one and later. Since the future works only with part particular protocols, protocols. It is suggested to have uh manual checks and not entirely rely on this feature to decide if there is a clear text credentials in traffic. Once you use this feature, it will open a new window and provide detected credentials. It will show packet number, protocol, username and additional information. This window is clickable, clicking on the packet number will select the packet containing the password and click on the username. Will select the packet containing the username info. The additional part prompts the packet number that contains the username. So let's go ahead and open up. The bonus PC app. We're gonna use the credentials tab here. What is the packet number of the credentials using HTTP basic auth, so there is only one. HTTP um. Basic off. And the packet number is two thirty seven. What is the bag number where empty password was submitted? Okay. So all of these packets have a. Password except for this one. So I believe it's the. Hundred and seven. Teeth um package. Packet, so let's go for it. And lastly, we're on task ten. Um actionable results. You have investigated the traffic, detected detected anomalies and created notes for further investigation. What is next? Not every case investigation is carried out by a crowd team. As a security analyst, there will be some cases. You need to spot the anomaly, identify the source and take action. Wire shark is not all about packet details, it can help you to create firewall rules. Ready to implement with a couple of clicks, you can create firewall rules by using the tools firewall um ACL roles. I think it's um. Right here. Once you use this feature, it will open up a new window and provide a combination rules. Uh for different purposes, note that these rules are generated for implementation or in uh on an outside firewall inter interface. Currently, wash I can create rules for net filter. IP tables Cisco iOS, standard extended IP filter. IP firewall packet filter, Windows firewall. Okay, so um. Select packet number ninety nine, create a rule for IP firewall. What is the rule for denying source IPv4 address? Um. Packet number ninety nine. So it should be this. Select packet number two hundred and thirty-one. Create IP firewall roles. What is rule for allowing destination MAC address? I think it's, we're gonna have to do the same again. IP firewall. What is rule for allowing the destination MAC address? It should be this. Can we copy this? Oh, okay. Wait a minute. Um, packet, packet two thirty-one. IP firewall. I'm sorry, we're looking for allowing. Wait a minute. Yeah, that's it. I did a, I just strictly copy and paste it. But the question is asking for, asking us to write the rule for allowing, not denying. With this, we have completed the room traffic analysis. It's been a long video. But I feel like I have learned a lot on Wireshark. How to use the filters to make things a lot easier. And how to look for certain attack types and look for certain traffics. So it's definitely been a very helpful room. And yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you for watching and stay tuned for more cybersecurity study sessions. See you later. Thank you.